One, two, three, four. Is everyone about ready to go?
Ready here. Can you hear me?
I can.
Seems like everyone is here.
All right. Well, it just turned 7:00 PM, so.
Can we join board docs? I haven't seen that screen yet. The joint meeting.
You should be able to. You may just need to refresh it.
Okay, thank you. Last I had it, it wasn't.
Well, let me know when you get it, Jackie, and we'll start.
I'm on.
Good deal.
I'm on.
Thank you. I would like to call this meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to order for the date of June 8, 2020. Our first item on the agenda is approval of virtual board meeting. Dr. Seichel.
Just a moment. So as in past board meetings, I recommend that the board meeting be held electronically due to safety concerns and in accordance with the March 25, 2020 emergency ordinance enacted by the Board of Supervisors of Rockingham County, Virginia.
We have a recommendation by the superintendent. May I have a motion to that effect?
I move. I move with all of the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. We are now entering a virtual board meeting. We have need to approve tonight's meeting agenda. May I have a motion for that?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. It's been moved and a seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. We have approved the agenda unanimously. Now we move to pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please, everyone, join me in a moment of silence, and I think, honestly, I think now is a very important time to observe a moment of silence as we think about our nation. Thank you. Item two on the agenda, two A is comments from the public. Dr. Seichel, do we have any comments from the public?
We do. We have one comment. As in the past, we have made a form available for the public to submit comments. And tonight, again, I will read the comments that have been submitted in this one. One comment from Beth Lehman. "Thank you for your leadership in these unprecedented times. The community needs your thoughtful discernment and willingness to think in new ways. This time of national unrest, illness, anger, and exposed racism is exactly the time to ask, what more can our local schools do to address structural racism and seek racial healing? There is a reality of racism built into our systems that is difficult for many white people like me to see. The nation has seen the evidence in police brutality disproportionately lethal to persons of color and in a virus also disproportionately lethal to persons of color. Robin D'Angelo, in her book White Fragility, describes white supremacy not the actions of extremists, but the culture we live in. School communities are not immune to a culture of racism and too often maintain it even unwittingly. Please use this moment in time as a catalyst to critically examine the culture we all live in and to build an anti-racist school system. Turner Ashby High School was named after a local confederate in 1956 during an era when Virginia vehemently rejected the 1954 court ordered school desegregation of Brown versus Board and eight years later, eight and eight years before RCPS admitted students of color. In his life, in his lifetime, Ashby was known to chase abolitionists from the Valley. With these associations, the name cannot represent the values of a diverse community. The term white privilege is often misunderstood to mean that all white people have an easy life. Not true. Instead, white privilege means that even when life is hard, white people will not face the stigma of systemic racism. For many white people, giving up the privilege not of not seeing or experiencing the harm of racism, including the impact of Confederate symbols, will be hard. Please lead our community forward to racial awareness and racial healing. Changing the name of T H S and assuring that Confederate symbols will not be showcased by individuals during school events, along with meaningful instruction about the rationale for those actions will foster a more just community. Please take steps to build an anti-racist school system. Such actions will benefit all people in the community. As a parent and as an educator, I'm ready and willing to help."
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. And you said that was the only public comment?
That was the only comment submitted, yes.
Thank you very much. Item three A on the agenda is highlights by board members. I would like to first call on Ms. Laura.
Thank you. Definitely a highlight that we had this week was graduation. I heard lots of positive comments and definitely I was able to attend the Broadway one and got caught bits and pieces of the others. And thank you, Dr. Seichel, and all your staff for all you did to make that possible. Yeah, I definitely heard lots of positive reactions, and as the mom of a rising senior, I think not now, because we've got our hands full with lots of other things. But I think in the future, we need to look at maybe doing that again. It was pretty awesome. So thank you for all your work on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that observation, Ms. Laura. I've been hearing positive things back as well. Dr. McQuilkin.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. I second Mrs. Laura's commendation of the graduation ceremonies. It was very well organized, very well executed, and the parents and the students were excited and proud. It was a very, very good time. I attended TA and Massanet and Technical Centers, and we really appreciate all the effort that went into making this truly a celebration for the class of 2020.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Ms. Reed.
Sorry, I need to unmute. Thank you, Mr. Falk. You know, what Dr. McQuilkin and Ms. Laura have said about graduation is just was fantastic. Even the MTC graduation, we've had lots of feedback about that. So and there was a lot of behind the scenes work that went there, went into those programs. And even the fact that some of the speakers, like Mr. Slater, came out and said a few words to those, I think it just was a really special event. As we continue our work as a board, we are going to have to roll our sleeves up, just as our folks have done for graduation. There's a lot of work to be done. A lot of things we need to do. We've been doing a lot in the last six or eight months, but there's a lot more. And knowing this group, it will be thoughtful and mindful, and we'll look at our community, and we will do that hard work and that heavy lifting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Breeden.
Say, "Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all the graduates, and it's a beautiful day."
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. Seichel.
First, congratulations to the class of 2020, although this year was very different than, you know, they had expected. We do hope that the celebrations over the last few days at least gave them an opportunity to graduate together. A big thank you for that goes to our Assistant Superintendent for Leadership and Academic Support, Dr. Doug Aldifer, who spent an enormous amount of time organizing, coordinating, all of the logistic pieces of these events. He is the main reason these events were handled with every detail in mind and by highly professional companies that, you know, provided the video feed, that provided the audio, that provided the stage, and even the parking. I thank you also to the administrators at each school, the counselors and teachers, because as you could see, you know, the video feeds, they truly made the graduations their own for their school. So the Turner Ashby graduation, the Broadway graduation, East Rock, Spotswood, MTC, they were all unique in their own way, even though they were held at the same place. And we heard so many positive comments. So again, congratulations to all of the graduates and to their families, and also thank you to everyone who made that possible. I do want to address, you know, some of the ideas that were put forth in the public comment and also, you know, some of the conversations that I have had over the last two weeks. I've had numerous conversations over these last two weeks with staff and community members about the events that we have watched unfold across the country and across the globe in support of a more inclusive society that will do the hard work of addressing structural inequities. We see many different forms of inequity around us, you know, when we went through our learning opportunities to sprint the spring that were remote, students without internet at home, they could not fully participate in these remote learning opportunities. Sometimes students who want to enter a career in a trade are treated with disrespect just because they decided not to pursue a college education. The students from poor homes or those who grew up in a traumatic environment, they don't have the same opportunities and so on. And all of these need to be addressed, but at the same time, we cannot ignore the fact that this country has a long history of racial segregation and of outright discrimination. You know, oftentimes we hear things like slavery ended more than 150 years ago. And that's not really what we are talking about. I was born in 1966. And even though I wasn't born in this country, in that year, it was still illegal in Virginia for a black person to marry a white person. I've met nurses who told me about the segregated delivery wards at RMH. So it's not distant history. And some of these attitudes are still present today. We can issue statement after statement. But as you know, you said before, and as Ms. Reed said, you know, unless we're willing to do the hard work to confront racism and inequality in all its forms, we won't change the fact that some face tremendous obstacles and sometimes violence because of skin color or where they are from. This doesn't mean that we endorse violence, so that we endorse riots. But we do have to understand that there is anger based on events that happen and have happened over a long period of time. You know, when I came to this country in 1992, sometimes I would call to schedule an appointment to see an apartment. And I was told it was already rented. When my American wife, who didn't have an accent, would call five minutes later, she could easily schedule the appointment. So and I faced that as a white male from Europe with all the advantages that come with that. I can't even begin to imagine what it feels like to face structural obstacles and discrimination purely because of someone's skin color. I can't even begin to imagine it. So we need to listen. And as a school division, we need to be part of the solution. And that's long and hard work, and we are committed to that. And we've already begun conversations, you know, with law enforcement, with members of the NAACP, with others, to have meaningful dialogue and take steps to improve. Again, all forms of inequality, but we have to recognize, you know, that there's something unique about discrimination and inequity because of race. And so we need to address all of this. As part of our innovation committee, we will form an equity committee that will look at all aspects of our education system, you know, whether that's curriculum, textbooks, interactions among staff and students. Those, again, are only words, and the actions have to follow. Because only then can we live up to a message that Robert F. Kennedy gave during his Day of Affirmation speech in Cape Town, South Africa, June 6, 1966, half a year before I was born. And he said, "Each time a man stands up for an ideal or acts to improve the lot of others, but strikes out against injustice, he sends forth a tiny ripple of hope. And crossing each other from a million different centers of energy and daring, those ripples build a current which can sweep down the mightiest walls of oppression and resistance. And I'm honored to work with this board and with this community and with our educators to do that hard work and again, look at all aspects of discrimination and inequity wherever we may find it. And those conversations can be uncomfortable. But if we want to be the best community that we can be, then I think we need to talk about these things openly and honestly. Thank you."
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. Next item on the agenda is item four, a approval of minutes from our last meeting. Board members, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes, and I would ask for a motion to approve them this evening.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. May I have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any corrections to be made? Hearing none, please cast your vote to approve the minutes. The motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of bills for payment. There are two files that we've had for review, mileage, and invoices. May I have a motion to approve the bills?
I move that we approve the A 2020 bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. I knew that I could depend on you to review things very thoroughly. Thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions or is there any discussion on the bills that we are about to vote on? Hearing none, please cast your vote. The approval to pay the bills for Rockingham County for May of 2020 has been passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me all right? Okay, good.
Yes.
Revised school board meeting scheduled for 2020.
I think we have the operating budget before then.
Oh, you know what? You're absolutely right. Revised operating budget for fiscal year 2021.
So in your materials, you have a revised budget that we have considered, you know, for your approval. And it is due to all the changes over the last few months that have occurred as a result of the pandemic that we have faced. State funding has changed. There is also, you know, a clear indication that sales tax revenue may be lower than what was budgeted originally. We have worked through a lot of the numbers and we estimate, you know, that that could be as much as $2 million. We have also worked with our local funding body to make sure that we understand the budgetary situation at the county level. And so our funding from the locality is expected to be the same as last year. And we also don't know exactly what lottery funds will do. And in addition to that, there's uncertainty about a potential emergency session in late July or early August by the General Assembly where budgets will be reconsidered. Now, there are all kinds of efforts underway to protect education or even to increase funding for education for some items such as increased transportation costs if, you know, school does not return the same way as it was last year, and there's an expectation that it won't be the same. And so we want to make sure that we don't get into financial trouble by not accounting for those potential changes. And so the budget that you have in front of you does still include the sales tax revenue as projected originally by the state. But we have spent a lot of time, you know, to set aside money that we will hold until the time comes where the state creates a new economic forecast, and that's expected to be in October, but then we will know a little bit more. We'll have a little bit of a sense of the sales tax for April in a few days. So about the middle of the month, we usually get sales tax numbers for two months ago. And so by mid-June, we should have the numbers for April and March. A sales tax was added as it was projected prior to the pandemic, but, you know, the economy was really not completely shut down until the very end of the month. And so April will give us some indication. And then again, in October, the the state is expected to issue a new economic forecast. Like I said at the last meeting, we looked at information from the Walden Cooper Center about economic projections. And so we have to make sure that we protect enough money for that and also, again, lottery or potential other budget shortfalls. However, there's also a silver lining in this budget, and that is a previously anticipated increase in health insurance cost. And so at this point in the conversations with health insurance, we do not anticipate that health insurance cost will increase. And so that actually gives us $600,000 that we may have available if all the predictions for that come true. If the economic situation is not worse than what we had already set aside money for. And so by the time the economic forecast comes in October, we do hope that we have money available. And so at the last board meeting, you know, we had some conversation about having to cut the 2% raise for all staff, and then also that we wouldn't be able to have the a number of classified salary scales adjusted. And again, until we know what the economy is doing, we still can't do that. But having those $600,000 now potentially available may give us an opportunity to maybe do a salary scale adjustment for some classified positions effective January 1, again, if the numbers materialize. And we also hope that that may give us the potential for a staff bonus across the board, but again, only if that money is available. But that's, you know, one item of positive news. And so with the budget that you have in front of you, we do anticipate that this budget keeps us in a safe place for potential shortfalls, but also allows us to address some things as money then becomes available if the economy does not do worse than than even the more serious scenarios from Walden Cooper have predicted. So my recommendation to the board is to approve the new revised operating budget for the 2020, 2021 school year and in the amount of $142,866,648, which is an increase from last school year of $781,100. Again, with a lot of bad money still being set aside, depending on the economic situation.
Thank you, sir. The chair moves to follow the superintendent Seichel's recommendation to approve the revised 2020, 2021 school operating budget as presented just now. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Breeden.
All right. Are there any questions for Dr. Seichel on the revised budget?
I would just say that I think it's a good plan. I think it brings some balance that we protect so we can see what additional revenue streams look like and things like that. There is one thing I want to point out. You mentioned about the classified and the salary and the increases and things like that. We, you know, that was a very difficult pill, I think, for all five of us to swallow when we knew that that wasn't going to work the way we had hoped and anticipated. I also think that when we approved the salary scales at the last meeting, there may have been some constituents that thought, didn't understand that approval process, and I think it's important for them to understand that I personally voted for the salary scales because I knew that we needed to do that in order to move forward for our next year. So it wasn't because I wanted to deny the salary scales to those classified employees or anything like that. It just, we needed to do it to move forward. And I think this board is committed to continue to look at both the classified salary scales and this teacher's salary scales as we move forward and look at what funds we have available. So, thanks, Mr. Falk.
You, Ms. Reed. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Seichel? Hearing none, please cast your vote.
Chair Falk, can I clarify who seconded that motion, please?
Pardon?
Can I clear? Can you please clarify who seconded that motion?
Mr. Breeden.
Mr. Breeden.
It was a, it was a, it was a close race, but Renee edged across the finish line just before Mr. Breeden did.
Okay, so Mrs. Reed, got it. Thank you.
And I'm glad they were both driving Chevrolets. Please cast your vote. Please cast your vote. The Rockingham County School Board has passed the revised budget recommended by Superintendent Schickel unanimously. Next item on the agenda now, Dr. Schickel, we can discuss the revised school board meeting schedule for 2020.
Yes, thank you, Chair Falk. So at the last meeting, we talked about potential changes to the school board meeting schedule because of the uncertainty in planning for next school year. We typically only hold one meeting in July, and we typically only hold one meeting in June. And so the new schedule reflects the two additional meetings, June 22nd and July 27th. There are some additional considerations for the board to discuss. We talked last time about a couple of different options, you know, whether that is one virtual meeting and one in-person meeting, or whether to hold all the meetings, for example, at a single location. Whether we make Rockingham Academy that, that one location or another building. Or even, you know, could consider working with county staff to see if the county boardroom was available. But, but that's a conversation that we wanted to hold for tonight. But the revised schedule, and again, if, if it were a virtual meeting, again, we can announce that on short notice, that it is virtual. But we also want to make sure that if we meet in person, that we give the public sufficient heads up that we are now again, meeting in person. And we are now in phase two, so the limits on gatherings are now up to 50. We don't know quite yet how long that will take. In phase three, of course, that will be higher again. But we could certainly consider having meetings in person for at least some of these meetings. As we had the last five meetings, including tonight virtually, and the one before then with social distancing in the Hoville Lab here at Central Office instead of Broadway High School. So my recommendation is to approve the calendar that we have presented to you as a revised calendar with, of course, the potential for board members to weigh in. And, and there may be the emotion to change the locations.
Board members, we have a recommendation by the superintendent. May I have a motion to that?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding the revised school board meeting schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. May I have a second?
Second. Second.
Ms. Lor. Thank you very much, Ms. Lor and Ms. Reed.
That was actually Dr. McQuilkin.
Oh, was it? Okay, all right. Well, good deal. We have a very good board that's eager to move things along. All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions about the revised school board meeting schedule?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question about the schedule per se. I'm going to be out of town the week before that 22nd meeting. And while I do not anticipate that I would be in any areas that would be impacted by COVID. Should we have a protocol if a board member has been out of town in terms of whether they should meet in person? I'm not necessarily asking for a question tonight, and that, that question just popped into my head as we were, as we were talking about it. So if that's something we need to address, we can do that individually, I suppose, but maybe just some clarification on how everyone feels about that.
Dr. Schickel?
Yeah, I would say that if the board wants to consider another virtual meeting, then that's also certainly possible. That would allow Mr. Breeden to attend potentially from an undisclosed location.
Well, I, I won't be out of town on the 22nd, but I will be on the week prior to that.
Okay, so either, either is possible. In terms of the conversation we had last time, we talked about the board having conversation around the reopening plan that the governor will likely announce tomorrow. And again, it would be a phased plan where we have to consider a number of different scenarios. And, you know, we're only two weeks away from that next board meeting. So I'm not sure that enough of the planning will be completed at that point to have kind of that retreat style or even, you know, the more in-depth conversations that we wanted to meet in person for. So I think either is possible, either to meet in person and then maybe adjust for one board member that is not available. Or to have the next meeting still virtual and then, you know, have the in-person meetings in July where, you know, the meat of the proposals will certainly be available for conversation. And I also anticipate that, you know, at that time, we will also have significant public input as the Innovation Committee that will take on this task continues its work.
So basically, play things as they arrive and, and adjust accordingly.
That would be my recommendation. Again, unless the board has a preference to meet in person on June 22nd. Again, that is still a meeting that could be held virtually and then maybe in-person meetings in July. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to recommend a particular approach here because I think, again, that, that's a valuable point of discussion for board members. As, you know, as I've heard many times, you know, in-person meetings are different, although now we're pretty comfortable and getting used to the online conversations. And so I just wanted to make sure that I recommend the additional meetings, but not necessarily whether they be held in, in person or virtually. And you can, again, you leave it just as to be determined, and we can determine that, you know, maybe with a week to go.
Okay, I like that. I like that thought. I'm honestly, I'm personally, just this board member. I like the, the thought of another virtual meeting, just simply because we don't know where we're going to be. But I am certainly willing to consider recommendations and fully knowing that circumstances might change for, for the better. And we could meet, so I'm, I'm willing to wait and see. But I do like the virtual meetings so far. I think they've gone well.
Yeah, I, you know, I just, I don't want what I was saying to be a driving factor in that necessarily. It was just something that I wanted full disclosure and full transparency to you guys. Out of respect for you all to know that while I'm not going to be out of the country, I am going to be out of town that week prior to that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything to add?
I mean, I think it's a good plan for us to wait and see. I may be away a couple of days before that meeting too, so that may, you know, that means Dan and I may be out and then back on that timeframe. I think that you're probably, we're probably phase three from the governor's not going to come until July sometime. So we could target face to face in July as more things are expanded as far as guidance from the state and the CDC and things like that. So, I mean, I think we could, I, I think it would be smart to make that decision by the end of this week, obviously. But I think we can leave it open for right now, too.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Anyone else? All right, I guess, you know, we have voted on this, right?
No, we're in discussion.
Pardon?
There's been a motion and a second.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Good to have a group to keep me on track. All right, if there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. The motion passes unanimously to approve the revised school board meeting schedule for 2020. And I really appreciate you guys being willing to lead me around by the hand at times when I need it. Bids, co-op food, co-op drink, milk, ice cream and produce. I think this is where Jerry, you're on the, you're on the, the circle.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Falk, members of the board. Dr. Schickel, can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely.
We, in our food service department, of course, we love to reopen. And in planning in that regard, we of course need to work on some bid renewals. And so we've done that. And so I would recommend a, a co-op food bid renewal, a co-op drink bid renewal, and then individually Rockham County bid renewals for milk, ice cream and produce. The produce is RFP, the rest of them are sealed bids. And they were all bid properly previously and had options to renew. So I would recommend that we do that.
Thank you very much.
And I do recommend approval of the bids as presented by our Director of Food and Nutrition Services.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schickel. We've had a mo, we've had a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the Director of Food Service recommendation. May I have a motion to that effect, please?
Move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation with regards to the bids as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions for Mr. Lehman or Mr. or Dr. Schickel?
I have a question for Mr. Lehman, not for, not about the bids, but about, so the, the program that we have going on now where they, they pick up, drive-through pickup food that will continue through the summer now?
Well, you know, that's an interesting question, and we have been planning for that and have every reason to believe that we'll do that. But as you know, we also needed to close Autobahn with, because of the, the real low numbers. And today's numbers were actually under 800 total for the remaining eight schools. So numbers are substantially dropping. And we had some of our sites, we had Fox 47 today, South River at 27. So only 27 children were served in the South River area today. So, so I'm not real sure. I've, I've been a little reluctant to say publicly, like, we will absolutely do this all summer, every single school. But we do plan to, and unless and until we see what happens with those numbers as they continue to, you know, potentially fall.
So we have funding for it as long as there's a need for it?
So yes, it is summer food service funding, and that is coming from USDA. And we would, we really get into a place where when we're below 20 meals or 25 meals at a site, that's really where we have trouble kind of breaking even. We, we really start to lose money. I'll say more money in our department when that happens.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for all the work that you all have done. That is, that's an important program, and, and I really appreciate it.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Good question and points well made, Ms. Lor. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lehman. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
All right, bye.
Textbook adoptions.
Yes, good evening, Chair Falk, Dr. Schickel and members of the board. It's very good to see you all. As a social studies supervisor, I, I do want to just take a moment and say that I strongly agree with Dr. Schickel's comments regarding the challenges that we continue to face in regards to race and anti-racism in our nation and certainly the world around us. Social studies teachers, of course, this is very near and dear to our hearts, and we've had a lot of conversations, of course, electronically, digitally, that have transpired over the last few weeks. Trying to wrestle with what this, of course, means for us as citizens, but also what it means for us and our duties as social studies teachers in the classroom. This certainly affects us in a very particular way, given what motivated us to enter the classroom in the first place was, of course, to raise good citizens. Certainly, good citizens are tolerant to, to embrace life, liberty. But as I think is important to note that, in that famous phrase of the American Creed, Jefferson noted the importance of equality first. And of course, that's been a historic challenge for us as a nation to meet that idealistic standard. But certainly one that is our guiding force and light in this nation that unfortunately we fell, fallen short of in, in many ways. I think it's the challenge of the classroom to help guide students to a better tomorrow. This is something that's, of course, very important to us, that students become good citizens and good citizens who are their brother's keeper, who are their sister's keeper. As Dr. Schickel noted, the history of racism and the legacy of Jim Crow can certainly be an uncomfortable conversation. But as social studies teachers, we strongly agree that we have to get comfortable having uncomfortable conversations. And that's certainly a very key element in what we do in terms of the social studies classroom. The teachers that I represent and the folks that I call my colleagues and that I work with in this regard and in this mission, we embrace the teaching of hard history. We recognize that it indeed is a hard history, but one that certainly needs to be taught. We have done this in the past, but we also recognize that history, of course, is ever-changing. And the conversations that are evolving and the needs for professional development will evolve out of the wake of these events. And we want to be at the forefront of doing that work to ensure that this is indeed a community that we call home and we feel is welcoming to all students who also call it their homes. And that would certainly apply to all students within the community. As I've reflected on the events of the past week and the, the challenges that we still face, my mind goes to a monument in Richmond. And that monument is on the rear grounds of the General Assembly. Some of you may be familiar with it. The front of the monument is dedicated to a 16-year-old girl named Barbara Johns. And on the reverse side of that monument actually is a quote from the Honorable Thurgood Marshall. He said, "The legal system can force open doors and sometimes even knock down walls. But what it can't do is build bridges. That job belongs, of course, to you and to me." To me, that's what we do in the social studies classroom, and that's the challenge that we have before us. So with that being said, I felt that, of course, the events of the past two weeks, it was important for me as social studies supervisor to say what I feel reflects the sentiments of my colleagues. I do have two separate items to bring for you this evening in a formal sense. At the May 11th school board meeting, the school board voted to establish textbook adoption committees for both AP Government, which is an existing AP course, and AP Modern World History, which is the new AP course. I'm asking for action to approve the recommended textbooks this evening from those two textbook committees. The committee for AP Government recommends American Government: Stories of a Nation by Scott Abernathy and Karen Wapples. Committee selected this text because it was the most engaging and age-appropriate text and was also the most aligned to the AP curriculum. And there was a very strong consensus amongst all members, including family members and students, and of course, the teachers involved. The committee for AP Modern World History recommends Ways of the World by Robert Strayer and Eric Nelson. And given that AP Modern World History will be a 10th grade course, the committee was focused upon selecting an AP text that was certainly a difficult text, a challenging text, but one that was more age-appropriate to sophomores and perhaps wasn't a college text as many of these AP books tend to be. So they felt that this was the appropriate choice of readable, engaging and of course, accessible. Those are our selections. That's the consensus of our two committees, and I would be glad to field any questions you may have.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Dickinson.
Mr. Dickinson, is this the first time we have an AP course at the sophomore level?
It is not. There's a little history there. We, in the past, have had AP European history. And that was because that aligned with the state curriculum. and that was because that aligned with the state curriculum in World History II, which tended to be more of a Western civilization course uh, in the traditional sense. Of course, uh, that course has evolved, uh, that class has evolved, I should say, and its curriculum, I would say, is more in line with a broader scope of world history, which I would have to say is refreshing and more appropriate. Uh, we also feel that that is more aligned with uh, perhaps a tenth-grade uh, level of rigor versus uh, AP European, which we found to be quite difficult for tenth graders. So we feel that this move to replace AP European with AP Modern World will pay dividends on uh, all of those fronts.
Thank you.
Dr. Schigl, do you have a recommendation?
Yep, I just wanted to make sure there were no other questions. I do uh, recommend that the board approve the textbooks for AP Modern World History and AP Government and Politics as presented by uh, Mr. Dickinson, our Supervisor of Social Studies.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schike. We have a recommendation by the superintendent and by the Supervisor for Social Studies. May I have a motion?
I move that we accept uh, the two books, the two textbooks as presented by Mr. Dickinson and recommend.
Thank you, Dr. McQuoak. A second? Was there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Breeden. We have a motion properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions or any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Do you have anything you'd like to ask uh, Mr. Dickinson?
I just want to share a uh, story with Mr. Dickinson that he may or may not be familiar with. Uh, your comments about social studies teachers uh, are well stated. My son, when he was a student, asked his social studies teacher at one point, "Are you a Democrat or are you a Republican?" And uh, the fact that he had to ask uh, meant a lot to me. And the teacher, not trying to avoid the question, said if, "I will tell you on the last day of school if you're still interested." And it, and again, it was a testament to this teacher's integrity that, at the end of the year, my son still did not know. And so I think that uh, while we all hold these um, these tenets of, of responsibility, it sometimes is difficult to check our opinions at the classroom door, but I'm, that we must do. And I, I, I still feel very positively towards that particular social studies teacher because my son had to ask.
That is very good to hear. We, we take that very seriously as social studies. In fact, in interviews, that's my favorite question to ask because there's only one correct answer.
That's right.
Uh, the social studies teacher that your son had uh, reflected that value. That is, we want students to think. Uh, we want them to, of course, um, be informed in their thinking, but we don't want to uh, cloud uh, what may be their uh, political persuasions. That is certainly not our job.
Right.
But thank you for sharing that anecdote. That's refreshing to hear.
Thanks.
Mr. Breeden, I'm glad you brought that up because I've heard that from several people who was at uh, who were students of that very same teacher. And uh, I think that is, that is in, indeed a goal that we as a division should seek to achieve with our teaching of government and social studies, that our teachers are not that they lead the children to think and make their own decisions and not try to influence them. And thank you, Mr. Dickinson, very much for all the work that you do and for your recommendation this evening.
Thank you all very much. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Please cast, and is, are there any other questions or any other statements? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Board approves unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Dickinson.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Bo.
Thank you, Bo.
Federal Programs Applications for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Title One, Part A, Title Two, Part A, Title Three, and Title Four, Part A.
We have uh, Dr. Pence to present um, these federal program applications.
Chairman Falk, Dr. Schike, and Board members, having been a history major, never getting to actually teach history, I'd much rather be able to do Bo's uh, presentation. Uh, but I will say this, that every time I'm in the weeds working on these applications for federal funds, I think it's very important that you all hear me say that in the big picture for me, it is still trying to get money for uh, those students uh, in our population, in our schools that are very needy. And um, so we'll take every dime we can get, every grant. So tonight I present to you uh, and ask for approval action for the applications for four federal program grants as uh, we have noted there. Do you have them as Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four? They're all Part As. You're hearing me, aren't you?
Yes, yes.
And uh, these are either based on leveled spending on the amount that was given last year or in projected. Sadly, uh, Title One was significantly reduced. So we were given permission since it had dropped to go ahead and base it on what uh, was the proposed amount. Uh, and then in the early fall, we, by November, we'll get uh, probably our final allotments at some point. As you uh, probably know, the students that see active two thousand fifteen, known as ESSA, uh, allows Rockingham County to receive federal funds that are used to support schools for struggling or high-need students, to support the education of English learners who have limited English proficiency, LEP, and engage in strong practices to effectively improve instruction and learning. So I'll start with Title One. And this coming school year, twenty twenty-one, uh, we do note that there will be approximately two thousand one hundred and one students identified in twelve Title One schools, K through fifth grade, based upon free and reduced percentages for each school. And I just tried to give you the highlights. We have added Lindo Edum as the twelfth school. We had eleven, and this year we'll have twelve, and that's based on Lindo Edum uh, having now a forty-five percent free and reduced um, percentage of um, students receiving the free and reduced uh, meals. Uh, that's, that's kind of interesting, and so it was added. In addition, uh, we have already uh, got confirmation that only one private school again will participate in receiving Title One funds, and that happens to be Eastern Midnight Elementary. And they will receive Title One funding, and by the mere fact, we put Title Four funds into Title One, they will receive that again. The other thing of note is uh, just for your information, that there is a McKinnon Vento, known as homeless to most of us, three-year grant application that I am going to work on and uh, submit by the end of uh, June. And that may uh, provide some funding towards transportation and even a social worker, and you may be interested. I have been in contact with um, EA US Salvation Army and uh, the shelters in uh, Harrisonburg and Rockingham, and they are very excited about this possibility and will sign off on their excitement about uh, more communication to help uh, those families that arrive there. Anyway, of the Title One funds, there will be uh, what we're going for is this amount of one million four hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and forty-six. And as you see, that is a reduction uh, for us um, from the past. So um, of about two hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-eight. Moving on to Title Two, uh, this school year, we will do the same thing we've done before, and uh, that's leveled spending that usually doesn't change a whole lot. That amount, two hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-seven cents will be used to reduce student-teacher ratios in Title One classrooms, grades three, which begs the question, um, as we know, if, if that looks different due to COVID nineteen, uh, COVID, uh, all of that, then that may be a reshifting of what we do if uh, the classrooms aren't overcrowded again this year. We'll see. Title Three, uh, there are approximately a thousand three hundred and fifty-one students, K through twelve, who qualify for EL services. Nine hundred and seventy-five are actually served, three hundred and seventy-six monitored uh, this past year. Uh, the funded proj- uh, the funding again is the same, approximately ninety-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, which is flat funding. Hopefully, that doesn't change a whole lot. We will know the final allocation in September, and a revision then reflects the updated amount. It is proposed that during this time, uh, the Title Three funds will be used primarily to fund the parent EL liaison position administrative costs, which is sixty-three thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and seventeen cents. And the remaining funds are spent on professional development for teachers, convention ed for EL staff, and uh, most importantly, student materials and supplies to support the EL instruction. The final federal program is Title Four, and once again, we're going to transfer that into Title One, and that has, in the past, last year, and we should get approval again, we'd be able to fund that second behavior specialist that we've had this past year, and a behavioral uh, assistant. And there again, that amount is a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three thirty-one. Interestingly, the history of Title Four is that that hmm, over the last couple of years continues to increase. Anyway, I'm open any questions you might have, and I present these applications of federal programs for Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four for your approval.
Thank you for your report, Dr. Pence. Uh, Dr. Schike?
I do recommend um, approval of the federal program applications for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one for Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four, a Part A of each application, as submitted by Dr. Pence.
We have recommendation by the superintendent Schike. May I have a motion to that effect?
I mean. I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the federal program applications for the twenty twenty-one um, year, Title One, Part A, Title Two, Part A, Title Three, Part A, and Title Four, Part A, as submitted by Dr. Pence.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Is there a second? Chair will second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions for Dr. Pence or Dr. Schike? Any remarks?
Thank you for all your work on this, Dr. Pence.
Thank you all.
Anyone else? Hearing no further remarks, please cast your vote. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Dr. Pence. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Mona.
Item four H, addendum to Superintendent Employment Agreement to Reflect VRS Requirements. Board members, you have been sent information and document to explain that the Virginia retirement system has changed the wording of their requirements for uh, compensation to be considered for inclusion into the Virginia retirement system. The board and the superintendent previously entered into a contractual relationship in the form of an agreement dated June twenty-eighth of two thousand nineteen for the superintendent to continue serving as the Division Superintendent of Rockingham County Public Schools Division for a new four-year term, which began on July first of last year. This amendment does not affect the amount of compensation or the terms of the contract, other than to bring into alignment our agreement as a school board for Rockingham County Public Schools with the superintendent for his employment as the superintendent of Rockingham County Public Schools. We have all had the information, I think, for a while. Actually, it came to us uh, originally back in February, but we've been kind of uh, preoccupied with dealing with COVID nineteen and educating students and keeping our employees safe. So I'm sorry it didn't come up until now for uh, vote and approval, but are there any questions about the uh, the amendment to the superintendent employee agreement?
No.
Okay, hearing none. And I, I must say, our legal counsel has done an excellent job of explaining things, and I think that's why we have uh, so few questions at this point. Um, hearing no further questions, may I have a motion to to pass?
I move that we accept, or that we uh, approve the VRS amendment to the superintendent's contract.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion, any further question? Thank you so much, Board. Hearing none, please cast your vote. The board approves the uh, amendment to the superintendent's employee agreement unanimously. We move now into item five on the agenda, policy revisions, and I see Doug, uh, you have joined us?
Yep, yeah. Yeah, sometimes these virtual meetings, okay, as I'm sitting, I hear on my deck.
Loves a backgammon.
There you go.
It'll be an in-person meeting at South River next time.
I have to pack a lunch before I go to South River. Um, and no, Bo had made some comments, and some others have too. Um, I know that some of you are avid readers, um, and I wanted to suggest to you a book um, that I had finished reading less than a month ago, but right before all this racial stuff happened. Uh, and I, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was recommended to me by Oscar. I, I don't remember, but um, the book is called Just Mercy, uh, which is a, a story, a very sobering story about how African-Americans are significantly and disproportionately impacted by the criminal justice system, specifically the death penalty. And uh, there's a movie as well, as I understand. I haven't seen the movie, but um, it's just, uh, it was interesting how I finished reading this book right before all this happened. This is uh, that's been on my mind quite a bit uh, recently, and um, I know Oscar commented at the beginning as well, um, and I just want to say in our conversations that we have uh, among our principals and, and maybe even more so among our kind of executive leadership team, that these issues of um, equity, whether it be through race, whether it be through socioeconomic issues, are very much a part of our everyday conversations that we have. Uh, that's a high priority for everyone on that team, and um, I think you all know that already, but I just wanted to share that again. Um, I, I am here uh, this evening to, to talk about um, the policies. Again, we've been working through this um, for the last almost a year now. Um, right now, we're in the midst of, we have kind of two uh, convergence of two different. two convergence of two different things. We have about 40 policies that were, most recently presented to us by the VSBA, that we've interjected some of those, as well as some of our, as we're continuing to do our comprehensive review. So it's about 50-50 split between those two kind of projects we're working on. There's 18 policies that are being revised, and then seven policies that are being either totally removed or replaced. So again, those are for your information. I'm happy to answer questions you may have here tonight, or phone calls, or next week, or next meeting, we can talk about those as well. So again, just want you to have those to review.
Thank you, Dr. Alderford. Board members, are there any questions for Dr. Alderford at this time?
I'm not even going to ask Dr. Alderford a question tonight about policies.
Anytime, Ms. Reed, anytime.
I know. Thank you for all you do. You know that, Doug. You know how much I appreciate the policy work that you're all doing. And I know that this year, especially with some changes in the General Assembly and some of the bills that came through, there's a good bit of policy work compared to years in the past. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
No questions, Mrs. Reed?
No, I don't have any questions.
These are truly unprecedented times. These are always good conversations.
I would like to take, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Alderford for all of his work on graduation, and congratulate him on his recent graduate. But you could tell that there was a lot of care and thought that went into it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. It was a labor of love, I will say. I was glad that it turned out the way it did.
I think we are all blessed to work with the team we work with. Thank you, Dr. Alderford. And thank you for your remarks.
Yeah.
Item 5B on the agenda, financial review for May of 2020.
You have the financial review for May in your materials for your review. So this is, again, the monthly update on what percentage and what amount of our budget has been spent.
Okay. Are there any questions for the superintendent at this point? Hearing none, we move into item six on the agenda, other business award questions. I will begin with Mr. Breeden.
Well, I was gonna pass, but contrary to what it looks like here in my office, every photograph in here is not of an automobile or automobile advertising. On the wall over here is a favorite photograph of mine of Robert Kennedy, RFK campaigning in 1968 from atop of an automobile. And the reason I like the picture is because there's a sea of hands reaching up to greet him, and the diversity in that crowd, the different color hands that are reaching up, speaks so much to where we need to be as a country. And Dr. Schikele referenced the Ripples of Hope speech. I would recommend a book by Kerry Kennedy, actually, that is called Ripples of Hope, where she talks about, or interviews people from different segments of our society, entertainment, politics, business, who have in their lives been a ripple of hope. And if you're looking for something now to uplift you, when there seems to be such a vacuum in that kind of leadership right now, I would encourage you read Ripples of Hope. Thank you, Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Ms. Lor?
Sorry, I had to take myself off mute. Unless Dr. Schikele knows what the governor's going to say, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lor.
If I knew what the governor would say tomorrow, I still would not be allowed to answer any questions, though.
That is called message discipline. Dr. McWhelkin?
Not at this time, but thank you, everyone, for working together so diligently for all of our students.
Thank you very much. I agree. Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Dr. Schikele, I have one question for you. How are we doing on our construction projects?
Yeah, so our construction projects have continued. So again, we have John C. Myers, again, still under construction. That was a little bit of a challenge, you know, during the pandemic, although it also made some things a little bit easier, you know, with no students in the buildings. And so we look forward to a completed renovation there, and it'll certainly be, again, an exciting event to walk through yet another school that is quite a few years old, was a middle school when I taught at Broadway High School, at the old high school, then became an elementary school. And we will walk in, and from the inside, everyone will say, this is a brand-new school. And I want to thank our director of maintenance, you know, for his efforts there, and of course, the school board and also our funding body, you know, for making those renovations possible, because the space that our students get to learn in gets noticed anytime we have a visitor. And so thank you for that question. It's, there were some positives and some challenges as well, but they're always, you know, also, you know, the opportunities to make the classrooms better for our students.
Thank you. I know that community is looking forward to that.
Absolutely.
That school's open, so thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Dr. Schikele?
I would say, I'm surprised, Mr. Breeden, that I think for the first time ever, I beat you to saying RFK.
You did.
And so I also want to make it clear, you know, that again, what Dr. Alderford had said, you know, these are conversations that are ongoing. This isn't about doing what's easy, doing what's convenient, what's popular at a particular time. We see petitions all over the place, you know, to do something, to not do something. That's not what my comment was about. He mentioned, you know, Just Mercy, that I had recommended that book to him. It was recommended to me by Kerry Wilburn, our special education facilitator. So these are conversations that take place here at Central Office in our buildings, and Bo Dickinson can confirm that, you know. He was one of my students at Broadway High School way back when. And so these are conversations that take place in this community, and again, they are about doing good things for all children, you know. I always say, we are here for all children. And unless we say Rockingham County, where we are only here for some children, then we need to live up to it, and all means all, period, no exceptions. And so I think that's the point of this, and that's really, really difficult work, and we invite anyone to participate in that work with us. And I'm so happy to have this board and this community, and this leadership team, and all the folks in our buildings that, you know, to work with, and we all can get better, everyone, and that's a goal, you know, for me personally, every day. Get better every day at what I do and how I think about things. And we need to listen and learn and take the appropriate steps.
Thank you, Dr. Schikele. And I would just like to follow with, with emphasizing what you just said, sir. I have observed and watched this division meet some of the most challenging times that this nation has ever faced. And with each new challenge and bit of adversity, no one cowers. No one tries to explain it away. No one tries to look for excuses. What we do is look for opportunities to improve ourselves, to improve our division, to improve how we do things. And that is the leadership that our superintendent brings to the school division. And I've never felt more confident in what we are doing as a team. And I just wanted to... Every new thing that comes up, we look for ways to deal with it and ways to improve ourselves. And I just marvel at that. And thank you so much, sir. And thank you, Board. This is truly a good team, and I'm honored to be part of it. We now enter item seven on the agenda, which is interclosed meeting. We have need to discuss some things in closed meeting that we cannot discuss in public because they involve issues that are dealing with privacy. May I have a motion to move into closed session?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3113711A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lor. We have a properly made motion. May I have a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McWhelkin. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. The vote to move into closed meeting passes unanimously. We are hereby in closed meeting, and I would ask the board to take a five-minute recess, and then I will open up the closed session meeting. Thank you.
You may now adjourn.
Agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Go on.
Okay, Dr. McQuilkin is joining us now.
So the extraterrestrial plans have a home. Dan, I would like to say that your hair looks marvelous.
Can you hear me?
Yes. I can hear you, Charlotte.
Okay, good.
I think we're all but, yep, we're all back.
Yes, everyone's back.
Okay, wonderful. Let me bring up my screen here. I would entertain a motion to certify that in the closed meeting, we only spoke about the things that we went into closed meeting to speak about.
I've certified at the best of each member's knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting were discussed. But requirements on the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies. And two, only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, considered by school board members.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lord. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? This calls for a, or this requires a roll call vote?
Charlotte McQuilkin?
Aye.
Dan Breeden? Dan Breeden?
He's signaling aye.
Okay, thank you. Jackie Lore?
Aye.
Lowell Falk?
Aye.
Renee Reed?
Aye.
All right, is unanimously certified. Now we go to the superintendent's recommendation.
I do recommend that the board approve the personnel listing dated June 8, 2020, including the supplement also dated June 8, 2020.
The board or the superintendent has made a recommendation to approve the personnel list as presented. May I have a motion to that effect?
I move that we accept superintendent's recommendation regarding the personnel report as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. And I just got a message that my internet is unstable, so we need to get this done. So any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote.
I got that message earlier. I told my kids to get off the Xbox, so seems to have helped.
As part of the issue with rural broadband, Jackie. Did we get a message that's passed? Here we go. Thank you, Pam Bocock. The motion passes unanimously. Is there anything else, folks, or can we adjourn?
We're good.
I hereby declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, folks, for the evening. This has been a good meeting.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.